In St Luke's? Not St Lawrence?
Start the meeting, please. Welcome to the Planning and Infrastructure Meeting of the 2nd of November. Apologies have been received from Councillor Huxley and Councillor Heatherington.
Austin.
Also, Austin.
Oh, and Austin, have they all gone to the vigil? Now, declarations of interest. Yes, I thought that was probably you. For Addington Street.
Fifty-three, Addington Street. Thank God you put it last on the agenda. My resubmission.
Is this your post or not?
This is my resubmission to the planning application, which was recommended by the Councillor.
The minutes of the last meeting are enclosed. Are there any comments, amendments, problems? Because I propose we accept them. Seconded, those in favour? Well, three people in favour.
Sorry, I wasn't there.
I actually aren't really voting.
I wasn't there either.
Right.
I shouldn't vote either.
Councillors Alburn, Green, Moore, Nixie, Ovenden, Wing and Young.
It was a very small meeting.
Can you ask them to raise their hands?
Can you raise your hands again if you're in favour, please?
If you were there.
If you were there. You and me. Right.
The dog says yes.
Did you get that?
Yes, I did, thank you.
The next item for is the Highways Improvement Plan. The Town Clerk has written a report. She and I and Councillor Nix, Councillor Alburn were in a Zoom meeting.
Sorry, I was.
You heard it, didn't you? Oh, you heard it.
Some of it, but I didn't want to discuss it.
Which this has come from, so you're going to present it?
Yeah, sure. The Town Clerk has briefed me. So, before you, you have her report and the HIP document, which is... Which the Town Clerk has tried to categorise. So, within there, you've got signage, speeding, et cetera, et cetera. And she's put them all together. The council's original priority was a 20 mile per hour zone from the railway line down to the sea. She's spoken to KCC and they are going to look for more information, timescale, cost, because this is a big piece of work and could take up to four years to complete. What they're asking, what KCC are asking is for members to look at our HIP and the documents following that, which is additions that have come in. First of all, to ask you if you would like to add all of these. This is the document that starts with Spencer Square end of St Augustine's Road, if you want to put all those into the HIP. And to come up, KCC have asked if you could come up with five or six priorities, smaller priorities, and then they can look into them. We have a budget of £15,000 to get you started. KCC will do the work, like speed checks, et cetera, but it will have to be paid for by RTC. So, basically, to look at the HIP, look at the extra document and decide what your priorities are going forward. So, five or six, if possible. Thank you.
But, what do they mean by five or six? So, is it, is five or six, is that an individual road or a small area?
Yes, yeah.
So, we're looking at five or six roads that would be a priority?
Yes.
The items on that list.
On the list, on the list, yeah. So, they're individual items you've got there already. Like, for example, number two is signage for King Street, yeah? But you can, if you wish, include the following document, which is a list of additions that have come through from members of the public and councillors.
The, I sat through two, three hours of Zoom meeting with KOC. And they continually refer to your HIP. But it is mainly for small villages who put their hands up and say, oh, the cars are going through our village. So, they've expressed concern about the length of our HIP. But we are a much bigger area than the other place, parishes. All of that. Sorry, that, Councillor Green.
I agree with you, Chair. The HIP process works well for small villages. And it was designed for small villages. But larger towns like us, it's not fit for purpose at all. And I think we should pursue that with the KCC. Through our KCC councillors and also directly to the transport cabinet member. And I think we should ask the Town Clerk to write what is, like, our concern, that the whole process is not suitable for our sort of town. We should write to them.
Would agree, I would second that motion, if you want to.
I just want to speak, please, Chair. Yeah, I think it's important that at that meeting that we had recently, to say that the KCC officers were surprised at the size of what we required through this council would be an understatement. We did, at that meeting, raise various issues about various roads which were of concern. I personally raised St Luke's Avenue, because there's been three accidents there in the past year. And, for instance, you've only got, they've got traffic calming measures, which have been there for years, but it's only in half of the street. And it's just, and with the cars like, you know, so it means completely looking at again, needs those taken away and these proper calming measures put in across the whole strip, across the road to calm down. So, I think, I go along with what David's suggesting. But I do think we need to narrow it down. We need to look at areas, if you've got one specific place within your area that you've got a concern with, then I think that we should target those. But the easiest thing that they referred to was the signs, for any signage, because we looked at signage in the town centre and most of it's poor. Or it just, but when they come up with the reasons why it was there, you can understand why it was there and why it's kind of hidden, because it just covers up the pathway or, I mean, people can't get through on disability scooters or anything of that nature. So, and it appears hidden. So, I would go along with David's suggestion, Chair.
There was a further memo, I don't, what did Laura, did the Town Clerk send it to everybody? Which said, if we're having 20 mile an hour speed limits, these will not be policed. Therefore, we need physical measures to try and reduce the speed. Like, we've been asking for chicanes and bunts and roundabouts and things, which throws a different light on, I mean, Pat and I have been trying to get Downton Park Drive looked at. And they won't do anything, because it's too expensive.
Could I just say some?
Yes.
I spoke to Rockstairs, KCC councillor, and she was the one who instigated the chicane in, what's it called? By St Joseph's School at Rockstairs towards St Peter's. She put £8,000 into it from her allowances. She says it's very difficult, but best thing to do is to get a list of what you want and get them priced. And you've got something to do with it. She will help us.
Well, we know what we want and what we need to the KCC councillor to forward it and get it priced, because as a Ramsgate Town Councillor or as a TDC Town Councillor, we're not going to get it any joy from them.
I think you just might if you keep at it.
Right, but I've been keeping at it for nearly a year now.
Yeah, but, sorry. Here's nothing, really.
So, Councillor Nix.
The other thing I found quite interesting in the meeting was the fact that she seemed to be unaware of other measures that were happening within Fannet. She referred to, it seemed like she was overfamed with what was going on in the area. And I think, again, because obviously you've done lots of work on this, I know very much of that. But it's a case of, like, if we are going to do something, as Pat said, and I'm with everybody so far on getting things done, and if it needs to be piecemeal. But you always want to make it so easy for them that they can't refuse, don't you? So, like, this is being done there, where's it being done? Why don't we have that? We want this, this is how much it costs or so forth. That's a lot of work on us, I appreciate. But I think it seemed to be, from what I gathered on the basis of the meeting that I was in, it looked like the only way that we were going to go forward, because she was just completely unaware as to what the other options or who was doing what. And that surprised me.
Yes, yes. I would agree with that. Councillor Pippa.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, do we have a date by which we've got to come up with the five-stroke-six ideas? Does that include us getting Councillors Constantine and Shank on the ball to get some prices for us, for those five or six?
That, well, we haven't got a date, but I suggest that we try to do it before Christmas.
Right.
And certainly before next May, the end of the council. And Karen Constantine is having a meeting, I think it's now on the 10th of November, called Twenty is Plenty, to talk about that. So, she is aware. Councillor Shank, I see him and talk to him quite a lot, but I never...
Difficult to pin down?
I can never.
If I might offer that, Chair.
Never get any sense.
No.
But I think in terms of our representatives.
Yes, I know.
Perhaps we could, in that sense, charge them to find out for us by a certain date, how much is it going to cost to get these things done? Give them the task of finding out for us, and they then can report back to us. That seemed emerald to me.
Good idea.
Thank you, Chair.
So, we have two, sorry, Councillor, who was speaking?
Councillor Alburn. All I was going to say, Chair, is before we ask, before we ask our KCC councillors, before we get any costing, we need to know where those costing can be. So, that's why I was suggesting that if within the wards, if you've got an area or road or whatever it is that you want to put them in, get them into the Town Clerk as soon as you can. Then we go out, exactly what Councillor Pipers said.
I think if everybody could do that, then there may be, you don't have to provide something from your ward.
You don't have to.
But you don't, so don't feel pressured into finding something. But, because we'll end up with more than we can cope with. Sorry, Councillor Green.
Yeah, I mean, part of this problem is our own fault, because we haven't pursued these things for many years, in my experience. And that's why the list has built up, part of the reason why the list has built up. I also noticed that some of these things on the list are relatively cheap, like double yellow lines, removing double yellow lines. So, I would suggest that as this is our last year, we include those in our list that we ask to be done.
So, we go for the little bits.
So, that we at least have a hit.
Right.
We've got to achieve something this year. And then we prioritise the other ones. And perhaps include a couple of those as well, for good measure.
Yes. Councillor Wing.
It's really difficult, isn't it? Because what, why are we doing this? I mean, that needs to be at the heart of our decision-making. For me, it would be road safety. But it, but road safety could also include people being able to navigate our roads better or cross our roads better. So, it might not just relate to drivers, it might relate to the pedestrian experience as well. And I've come in off Circle 17, which is 20 miles an hour everywhere in town. Because I know I've got roads that are dangerous in my ward, but I know every ward's got dangerous roads. St Luke's is a typical example, Downton Park Drive is a typical example. So, how are we going to do something that actually gives us sort of, that has maximum impact? Does that make sense? How are we going to choose? I mean, I'd plummet for west, I'd plummet for all the way down, but I know Downton Park Drive is a nightmare as well. So, what are we, how can we choose? How can we decide what is going to maximise things?
Something goes on from that. If I could just add on, my question was then, what do we know what KCC is doing? I say that because in my ward, in the southward part of it, it's all about parking and dust vehicles, dust carts especially, not being able to get round. And, but I did notice that on land posts at the moment, there's information that double yellow lines are going around to certain places, which has caused prurory in a certain area. But anyway, half of them are asked, but half of them ate it. What I'm saying is, this work is ongoing. Did we even know about it? I mean, what works are TDC or KCC doing that are ongoing that maybe we should know about, which would absolutely run into...
There's a review of parks, isn't there?
What, what Councillor Wing is saying about what we need to prioritise. It's worth prioritising something.
Well, it's going to be quite hard to prioritise, prioritise things, because everybody will have stuff from their ward. I think Councillor Young had her hand up, yeah.
I don't see any mention of London Road. And the speed that people travel on London Road.
London Road has a...
London Road has two schools.
They have a 40 mile an hour limit.
I mean, they do 60.
Yeah.
And people have gone around the other side of the bollard, because you're coming out the road and they're halfway coming up the hill. But they're going so fast, they can't slow down.
Well, you, you can...
Do you set to 30 straight away? That's a simple sign.
You can add more things to this plan, but we have to consider them all. I'm surprised it's not in here already. And it would be included within this 20 mile an hour zone that we don't really have a chance of getting, not within the next 50 years, I wouldn't say for... So, if you, well, I think if everybody emails the Town Clerk with their priorities.
From this list.
From this list and this list, whether we add these other ones.
Thank you, Chair. I think what's important is what KCC have already told us, that 20 mile an hour zones, you could be looking at three to four years.
Yeah.
In relation to what Councillor Wing has just, just said, TDC has notified all councillors of the highway, the highway masses that KCC are now doing. And the signs have been up. And I've been contacting everybody for imitations to what they are proposing and the normal... I don't want this here, because it'll move, I can't then park here and it's going to move it somewhere else. And I think this is, this is the problem that we have in the town with tiny streets in the centre of the town. And that was another thing, is what KCC were saying, is because you've got the tiny streets, it's less likely that anything would be done. It would be on the, perhaps bar, on a major road like London Road, where they may decide to take, to take some action. But I think if we can just go forward with what we said, Chair, and I was certainly second David's proposal. And if Councillor Pipers could be, if Councillor Green is happy to...
Councillor Green's first proposal was for the Clerk to approach KCC and telling them how inappropriate...
I've got it written down as RTC to pursue via KCC councillors and the Cabinet Member. And the Town Clerk to write airing our concerns as the process is not suitable for a town of Ramsgate's size, is that right?
Yeah. Okay, so that is that thing.
Yeah.
So, I will second that. All those in favour?
Oh.
I think that's everybody. Then, sorry.
Sorry, Chair.
Then I was, I was just racking my brains to think what the next one was, which was working out, sorry.
I always thought that if it was a road safety issue, then that wasn't, wasn't suitable for the HIP.
Yeah.
That the HIP, that road safety issues should be considered under merit, because, you know, there's lives at risk. That the HIP was for perhaps less crucial matters. I mean, is that, is that what was said at the moment?
Well, I think, no, but I think it's all been subsumed into one.
Chair, if I may, I think, I think as a council, we need to put forward to KCC anything that we feel is the right way for Ramsgate. Therefore, and, you know, it could take years, I don't know, because we're just one of, we're just one of many in Kent who wants something done. But if we don't add it, it's never going to get on. I'm not saying we've got to put everything in, but I think we select, get it, get it put into the Town Clerk. Then you've got a list of what it is, and then we can see if we've got all the bits.
We've got to try and power it, I said. Yes, Councillor Clifton.
I'm just looking at this, there's quite a few here that are very close to each other, that they're almost the same thing. So, three, four, five, six are all roads that actually are linked together. And it's all about signage in those roads. And I'm just wondering why we split them out and they're not together. And the second thing I wanted to comment on was picking up on Councillor Green's point about effectively going for easy wins on this. I'm more inclined to see if we can put in one or two of the larger issues and then go for the rest with the easy wins, so that we, you know, not just all easy win. So, that's just one thing I...
Yes, I tend to agree on that.
But, yeah, I just wonder whether or not some of these could actually be one item. And again, you've got the loading times, York Street and Harbour Street, they are right next to each other. And yet, we've got them as separate items on here. So, I'm just wondering whether or not there's any merging and that, I'm sure, could be able to be considered.
It's just that if the town council's got to pay for it, then we're not going to do anything this year, because we haven't got the budget for it. What we're talking about is putting budget aside in the next, next, next year.
Okay. Well, I don't think we can thrash this out now. The priorities. But Helen's idea that we go for one or two big things and lots of small things and look at how it can be combined around the high streets.
Chair, if I may, I remember when we did this, we, we almost had to separate them out, so that it was clear what we were doing.
Maybe.
Otherwise, it was amalgamated. Otherwise, we, it didn't make sense, it needed to be separated at the time.
Well, we have already got, which I didn't realise, TDC putting in a 20 mile an hour limit in Charlotte Court and the other, other suitable places. Yes. So, that's...
Why?
I don't think they've ever been to Ramsgate.
I think they have.
Can we all take out?
Do we want to get out of the chain, wouldn't I?
Exactly. I'm part of what Laura wants us to do.
Right. The, the additions, which is on the next page, Spencer Square, Cotteshires Park, Downton Park Drive. Downton Park Drive's already in, I think. Harbour Parade. Can we put these in?
Yes, please.
I propose that we put them in or we combine them with some others. Is there anybody got anything to say about that?
I would like to see that we can include those in when we're looking at the list for our recommendations to the Town Clerk as to which of these go forward.
Yeah.
There's one on there that I would definitely like to include, which is the Harbour Parade one.
Yes, we do, we do like the Harbour Parade. Downton Park Drive, I believe, is already in there.
Hasn't Cotteshires Park been done?
I don't, I don't even know that.
I mean, I'd definitely like to see a crossing on East Smith, near Jacob's Ladder, because it is just...
No, I know it. And there is an email to Richard Sykes from two years ago, over two years ago. Yeah, we need an island refuge, I would have thought that. Right, so I'm proposing that those four items are added to the list. And then we, we look carefully at the list and make our recommendations to the Town Clerk. And then we'll have to sit down with her and sort it out. Councillor Green.
Right, I agree, absolutely. But through you, Chair, Colar, Harbour, has the entrance to Cotteshires Park already got bought?
Got bought, yes.
Yes, we don't need that.
So, we don't.
I got those in a couple of months ago.
So, there's only two we need. We need the Spencer Square end and the Harbour Parade. Can we put those in, please? And if anyone second that? And all those in favour? So, it's, yeah.
Just one and four, yes.
Just those, one and four, yeah.
As part of the HIP, I've reported it former by the Motor Museum, because the bollards are down again. There is no surface on that road and it's, I think it's the worst piece of road in Fannet, I think. Paul Vallack says it's checked every month, but I seriously don't think it has been checked. It's even now dangerous to cross on foot, because it's so rutted. So, as part of the HIP, are they looking at road surface where, where there might be? And I've sent several images to Paul Vallack to say something needs to be done. I've got a feeling that they don't want to touch it, because the Motor Museum is holding it up. But it all, it's, it's deteriorating really badly.
I mean, I had already spoken to Paul Vallack about the state of Harbour Street. Incidentally, he seemed to have won the Poundland battle in the bringing a half-size lorry, which is still enormous, up. And because I think that lorry damaged Harbour Street. But I think that area is a different and more worrying problem. Maybe they're just waiting to collapse and then they will...
I will keep reporting it.
Right, okay.
And I'm not going to let it drop.
So, you should...
The Town Clerk has asked at least twice, to my knowledge, for all councillors to report to her things to go in the HIP. Now, is, have you done that?
No, because I'm not sure what can go in the HIP. Is it...
I think I have it.
It won't be on the list.
But what I'm saying is...
Whatever you've done elsewhere, that won't be on the town council's list.
Okay, so we need some clarification over what can go in the HIP, because I thought it was about road changes, not improving the surface of the road, which is maintenance.
Just do it all, just get it...
Bounded.
Yes, okay, yes.
Bounded.
Yes.
Members, if you, if you go away, look at the HIP as it is and that additional information. And also, anything else that you can think of that needs perhaps to go into the HIP and come back to the Town Clerk on that. That's what I put it, I put it basically that you've got the, you've agreed the additions, one and four, and for councillors to look at the list and advise the Town Clerk of priorities and any, and other issues.
Yeah. Is there a deadline for that?
I will ask the Town Clerk to email you if there is. But I think perhaps it would be a good idea to have a deadline, so that...
Before the next planning meeting.
Before the next planning meeting, okay.
Are you suggesting that each councillor puts forward their three priorities?
Their priorities, yes, yes. Their priorities, yes, yes. I've just done one to me, if you like.
Well, I mean.
In your ward. I mean, I will have priorities that not in my ward, but, um.
I don't think that's.
No, I know, but we'll, maybe Steve and I will have to sit down with Laura and thrash it out in the end.
It's three of the right number.
Hmm?
I, I think that's reasonable.
Yes, that's reasonable.
It, it's difficult to do that. Well, it's not difficult to do that because there is so much to choose from. But I've got Priory Road where we desperately need double yellow lines at the corner, so the waste vehicle can go around. But that's not as big an issue as, as the corner of.
Well, put it as one of your three.
Not everything's going to get done next phase here, you know, so you need to prioritise what it is that you.
I will do entirely and hand that in with priorities on.
Yeah.
But it's not on the list. It's not on the list.
No, because I thought the hip was about traffic management rather than the surface. I thought, I thought the road surface is just management stuff that should be done anyway routinely and isn't being done.
Um, councillor Clifton. I, I was just wondering, I, I just firstly to say councillor Nix's comment about splitting them out, I, I think I recall that, but. The goalposts have moved since then. So that's why I was suggesting that some of these in the town centre could be lumped together because of their similarity. Are you going to take that on board or not? As, you know, someone wants to say all of those signs around King Street, Turner Street, et cetera, could be as one item or not. I'm not, I'm not going to put that on my list because I've already chosen mine. Um, but if anyone else wanted to, I just wanted to, I thought it might be worth checking.
Well, I, I do.
It's all right. Otherwise that's six gone in one go.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Green.
Just one last thing. One-way street in Effing.
It was raised.
Effingham Street.
I don't agree with that as it happens, but I'm only one person.
I don't see how we can open Radford House without that being a one-way street.
Yeah.
If I may, Chair.
Yes.
You may recall at that meeting, uh, that is one of the things that was raised at the end. And, um, we did discuss that. I think the, the K C C were open to that. And, but I did say that it needs to be one-way up, not one-way down.
Yep.
So I think they were open for that. So that's something that can, can go in.
That, that's in my ward, Effingham Street. And I, I know, I would, I would want that to be looked at seriously. Because my experience of Addington Street being the one-way is it just encourages speed down the street.
We can always put a speed up in it.
Uh, and, and what I, what I think you've also got to try and model is the effect on other streets. So if you make Effingham Street one-way, I, I mean, we've got, we've got Addington Street that way and Roy, and Royal Road that way. So there is a circuit. You have to model the impact of cars not being able to come down Effingham Street. Because you could end up creating a problem elsewhere.
I suggest, Chair, through, through you, that that is something that K C C would do.
Okay. This morning, the, it was closed down here because there was a big accident. So you couldn't drive through. Um, the High Street is also closed because they're digging it up above where I live. So the only way for me to get to Moses Montefiore was to go back and up Effingham Street. Down, yeah, it was quite complicated. And I think there are routes, as councillor Wing says, that are very complicated. But, um, yes, councillor Green.
Cars driving on the pavement to avoid each other in Effingham Street.
That happens every day in Addington Street at all. And it's wide.
And Addington Street is only one-way.
If, if, as we hope, we increase footfall to Radford House, we can't have that happening.
But this, I mean, hopefully it will be footfall rather than vehicle movement, because there's nowhere to park.
Cars driving on the pavement to avoid each other. Won't mix with the footfall.
No, they won't. But we see cars on the pavement every day, a car, cars pavement on Addington Street. The, the lorries go up the pavement.
Can we move on?
Can we, yes.
Can we move on, please? Yeah. Um, have we got any more motions?
No, I, I think we're over.
Right, okay.
And any, any bits and pieces that you've mentioned, like putting things together, et cetera, I will raise with the town clerk for you.
Yeah, and can you email the town clerk, especially things like the road surface and so on, so. Okay, um.
Lovely green line.
So it's just before you go into the turning to Satchest Street, pop up. So it's this one here. So it will be the only one on this side.
On that.
So it's going from that box space.
Yeah.
Raising up. That would be the other channel on the other house.
Is there any other elevation or?
Well, I, I object on the, the materials they're using. They should be using slate and they should have. Conservation windows. But, um.
I have a section.
Personally, Chair, I, I think that the Nancy Ibroh roof would be out of character in relation to that area, the area within that concert, within the conservation area there.
Okay.
I'll object on those grounds, Chair.
I, I would second that. Yes, but I would, I am unhappy about putting plastic windows in. And artificial slates, but. Yeah. All, it's a motion that it's artic creeping with the conservation area. Yeah, all those against. All those.
That's not.
Yeah, okay.
And you can add that, yeah.
Yes, yes. Um.
They're also out of character.
And to provide some more houses.
Maybe you could send the design to what's existing there, obviously, on the outside, um, like councillor Clifton said. On the inside, which is that it was going to be able to be bi-folded off the east origin, by the way.
Go back to the photo you just had on there, please.
Yeah. It's not the bike shop.
It's not the.
Councillor Piper.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I suspect most of us would look forward to that building being improved significantly. Um, to be perfectly honest, in my view, lots of the materials in lots of the buildings along that road are pretty shoddy. Um, I do happen to know that the developer tried to purchase additional buildings along that stretch, all the way up to the traffic lights. Where the old UKIP office still is, uh, and the empty one next door to that. But had no responses or any joy from the people who own those buildings. The developer is attempting to make it look really smart.
Yes.
Um, I understand concerns about materials, but I can't see them getting away with shoddy materials. Personally, I don't think Building Control of T D C would allow that. Um.
If they use.
I think if they use the right materials, I think it's a positive development of the street.
That is, as you say, a very shoddy street.
If they use the right materials, I think it's a positive development of the street.
Councillor Clifton. It's difficult to tell without looking at the rest of what's either side. But I'm, I'm puzzled why there's, um, the design forum is saying elevations do not follow the rhythm of King Street. Because actually, I'm not sure what rhythm.
And King Street goes on it.
Well, yeah, I suppose it flattens out a little bit, doesn't it? But it joins in two bits. It just, looking at that previous picture, it just struck me as a strange thing. And I, the quality of materials, well, um, yeah, we, we would always like good quality materials, so, um.
Chair, I, I, my only real negative comment is that it is pretty boring and, uh. And there is, and it appears to be a flat roof. Um, have we got any drawings of the roof at all?
It is a flat roof.
It's a flat roof.
Yeah.
You know, well, it's not a flat roof, it's four flat roofs.
It's four flat roofs.
Uh, so.
But that is the, well, the Georgian style doesn't have flat roofs, but it has the roof hidden behind a parapet.
It's a parapet.
So it looks as if it's.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't say, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
That, I can see what the, uh, what they're saying about it, the rhythm of it, without any pitched roofs on it. Um, you know, it would have been ideal to have pitched roofs on it, but, um.
Well.
I think on the whole, Chair, um, I would go with it.
Yes.
I would object to it.
I was, I was second. Sorry?
Does it shop?
Yes, we have a picture.
Yeah, but I, I think in, Chair, sorry, I, I, I think in fairness, none of the shops along there have been, you know, on the other side. It's different. Um, they're, they're being used, but the shops on that side are not particularly. Being used. So, um, on the whole, I propose no objection, Chair.
And I would second that. Oh, yeah.
I was just wanting to ask, what facilities are they for the rubbish?
There is a bin store.
Is it going to be bigger? I can show you.
It's there.
Each one has a bin store.
Three point two metres square.
Because it's so big now, aren't they?
Three point, how many? Three point two metres squared.
I mean, it's just quite tough, but at least it's, I mean, I don't believe it would function as a bin store and a back store. But I think.
Can you show me where King Street is?
Um, so you've got.
There's Broad Street.
You've got Bantry Park here, you have Crossroads, and then it's just down.
Yeah.
A fish and chip shop on the corner, is it called somewhere?
Fish and chips.
It's mostly residential.
Because once you lose shops, then you lose the footfall for the next lot of shops.
Yeah, but that one's been empty for.
For a long time.
Couple of years now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was taking it up.
I think I must look just say that that's, there is so much residential at that end of King Street already. Um, that that footfall's not there anyway, anymore. It's gone.
That's counterintuitive. If there's so much residential, surely.
Well, we've got proposal that we have no objection, which I second. Can we have a vote on that? All those in favour? Right, that's unanimous. No abstentions, no against.
It hasn't been on, but it's basically they've got the approved twenty flats wanted, and they've resubmitted with changes, which is.
Thank you. Can I ask, consult our expert, councillor Orkin?
Someone coming?
How, how many flats are they supposed to have before they do social housing?
Before they?
Before they got to the allocation for social housing.
dwellings, that was.
Dwellings.
Uh, I think it's twenty-two, something like that.
I thought it was ten.
Is it ten?
I thought it was ten.
I've lost count, Chair.
There's no mention of it, that's all.
I, I think this business has offered, I think, I think they have spoken to T D C about social housing.
Right.
And this is the developer that's also, uh, would quite like to take over a floor on the multi-storey. So parking is an issue, but it's within that, that ring. So.
Councillor Orkin.
Yeah, Chair, just to, just to go back to what you were saying about, uh, social housing, that can be dealt with. By money through a section one O six agreement, that can be relied into the sort of building.
Yeah, councillor Green.
It's a clever argument, I mean, that can fit seven two-bedroom flats in the space of one of the multiple.
Yeah, another story.
Yeah, Dean, have we got pictured the two-bedroom flats?
There, there is another story. They've got a very, very strange arrangement in the middle with a.
Eight-room.
Hot desking space and, um. A, a big, big room, which is supposed to be a children's playroom. They're at the top, in the middle at the top, that's the children's playroom. And then underneath that are desks for hire.
So you've got the approved one, which is the one you looked back in twenty twenty-one. And then all of the ones that are half covered are being amended for the, for this application. So for that, for the ground floor, they're increasing the cupboard storage and reducing it down. So you can see that at the moment, it was getting to twelve square metres, and now it's into eleven point five and six point three. So they've divided it into two.
Six point three metres is too small for a double bedroom.
They're packing too much, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yes, councillor.
Chair, I, I, just to say that, um, you know, the size is the same. In the flats, but the rooms, as you're saying, have been, they've gone from one bedroom to two, to two bedrooms. Um, that is something providing that they are in accordance with the flat guidelines. As to how big, whether or not you think six point.
No, no, it's statutory, eight metres.
If, if, if that's the case, then it will be refused.
Yeah. Uh, it can be a single bedroom, I think.
So shall we, uh, do you make a proposal that, that we reject it because the.
It's over development.
Uh, uh, the, the.
Which is what we said last time.
Splitting of the rooms makes one of the rooms in the, in the new two-bedroom flats way too small.
No, I don't think we can, we can refuse it on that.
You can't, it, sorry, Chair, you, you, you can't call it over development. I think what you can refer to if you want, because it's not over development according to the size, because it's the structure and everything of that nature. But you can object in relation to the size of the bedroom, of the two, the two-bedroom bedrooms. That are, that are not sufficient in size. You can object to that if you want.
Councillor Pippa.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I can't see it on there, unfortunately, my eyes are not. T D C approved, T D C approved thirteen two-bedroom units on this site. Um, the applicant is going to an eighteen-one beds. He's knocking the one beds down to eleven. And he's increasing the two beds from thirteen to twenty. Are, is it possible to see on there whether the new seven two-bedders. Have got the same sized bedrooms as the already approved thirteen two-bedders? I, I can't see because I can't.
No, we'd have to look.
Good thinking, Ben, eh?
Because if they've already approved six foot three by eleven foot bedroom, which, which actually, given eleven foot, a bed is six foot three long. So you could.
No, that's.
In both directions, you could get a bed in a room that big.
It's the metre, it's supposed to have eight square metres for a double bed, bedroom. It's not.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about a single bedroom, the, the second.
So it's same, it's same.
Guest room, wouldn't it?
Yeah, a single bed or a baby.
If they've already approved thirteen two-bedroom flats with this size bedroom.
Size.
Then they're not going to not approve seven more.
Can you, um, show us where the lift is?
Do you want to see where the bedrooms, Christine's just had a look for you.
Okay.
To answer your question, so.
Yeah.
These ones in the middle of the two bedrooms that have remained, um, that's a nineteen and a twelve. So it doesn't match then literally where, where I just said that's eleven point five and six.
Right.
They've not kept it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That makes it clear, and we can object to the size of the.
Councillor Clifton. I'm also thinking that, um, by increasing the number of two-bedroom units in here, we're increasing the number of family units. Which potentially in, then has an impact on the, the, how the building is used, the amount of noise, the amount of. Waste and everything else. Um, um, councillor Piper referred to as a guest room, but it may not be a guest room. It may be a teenager's bedroom or, or something like that. And so.
But we can't bump it.
It's a, it, it, it becomes then mu, you know, a different feel to the, to the, the building, the whole building.
That's just. No good. You've tortured.
Hence the overdevelopment. The motion is, the, the proposal from councillor Wing that needs seconding is that R T C objects on the grounds of the size of the bedrooms within the two-bedroom flats.
Okay. Right, all those in favour? I think we ought to object. It's very, very curious what they are.
Um, but one of the ones that, uh, one of the other objections that has come up from within the community is concerned about the, been poured into that site. Just to, to mount those legs and things like that, so there is, there are other concerns, presumably that was taken into account by TDC, one hopes. In the first application, thank you councillor.
There's only one objection on the website.
Uh, yeah, I'm going, I'm going by other comments that we've had in on one-on-one basis and, and, uh, you know. Maybe it's not on the website, but it's comments that we've had direct, um.
A lot on social media.
And social media is very.
Yeah, but as we know, social media, the people with the mastercard go on.
Some are, some on social media are very supportive, some are very anti, um, but, um, on David, yeah.
I, I was gonna say the one objection on TDC's planning website is from the actual conservation officer.
Yeah, sorry, um, councillor Green.
Well, I've objected to this ever since it was put there for the following reason. Wellington Crescent is a, is a, a classic design, it's symmetrical. It's a bad stand right in the centre. This is the monument of monstrosity, totally ignores the symmetry. Of the crescent, it never should have been allowed there. Also, the, I'm an engineer, and it's atrocious. It, it's a, if they were gonna do something like that, it's a huge wasted opportunity. If, if you got, if you got a windmill, it should be.
Windmill.
Do its job, in my opinion.
I don't think it is a.
Not just static.
Sorry, councillor Orban, then councillor Piper.
It, it was done on the cheap, and it should be got rid of as soon as possible.
Councillor Orban?
I was gonna make a proposal, Chair, but I'm happy to.
But councillor Piper?
I was gonna propose that, uh, that we object to it. I propose to object to it, Chair.
Just, Chair, I was, uh, along the line to councillor Orban, I'd originally written a note down here that we should, uh, seek to have it removed by next Easter. But in fact, now having read that, my proposal was simply gonna be that RTC agrees with the conservation officer and requests it be removed, sweet.
Far more relevant than me.
Okay, a second of that, yeah, I'll go with that. All those in favour? Well, I'm against, I think they should stay.
All right, so this is just off. You're going up the semblance.
Yeah.
They've, they've got a tour in bar, um, so, uh, quite rightly, this drop curve, the access is, is increasing and then they're going fast on there. You've got the drop curve there.
Yeah.
It's increasing it over.
Yeah.
And then you've got the extension, that's gonna be.
Can we see the, the plan?
Drawing.
So this is, it's existing, so what you'll see is the back bit is gonna come up as a coin. This bit's gonna raise up a little bit and then the drop curve's gonna.
No, tell you that, man. Look at that.
Right, you see on the top left-hand corner, plan, there are two lovely big cars parked there. And then on the right-hand side of that drawing, that little room with the garage. Um, behind the garage is a gym, which obviously they're quite entitled to do. But can anyone tell me how you get into the kitchen? Like Dean, for example?
Good question.
I mean, I.
This, because we are house hunting at the moment.
All right.
But, um, there are certain rules with regard to changing the use of a garage. That require planning permission and other things that don't.
Yes.
If you leave it on the title as a garage, he could be intending to use the back end of it for private gym, eighteen feet by about eight feet, eight foot six. Um, so he, he, it looks as though, clearly the cars are never gonna go in the garage. It looks as though he's just going to section off, I can't see the material for that centre.
He's going to section off the garage.
Looks as though he's gonna temporarily section it off, but it re- retains the title of a garage, because that will affect resale value of the house. If you remove the garage.
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, no, I was just a bit suspicious about what they wrote.
Well, Chair, I have to say, I've got a garage and I've never, ever put my car in it.
No, I mean, people know.
It's all full of junk, it's all, I could see nothing wrong, wrong with this at all, Chair.
Well, except if you've got a garage, it should be big enough to put a car in, that is my.
It, it's all about the value of the house. Is the garage worth that much without a garage, innit?
I propose no objection, Chair.
Okay, is that seconded?
Yeah.
Yeah, all, all those in favour? I will vote for that, yeah, that's unanimous, I think, thank you, Chair.
Your next application is flat two sixty-three to sixty-four King Street, alteration to the roof to facilitate a loft conversion.
Done a lot of calling, isn't it, Chair, I'll give you.
It's in, in the conservation area, called in by councillor Makinson, reason for calling hard.
Right, if we've got.
This is already existing, so. So you've got the ground in the first and then the second will be later, so there's no change to the ground in the first. The second, so they have actually laid that as two second floors, that's actually the third.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, which, looking at this, this could just be another planning document error, because it looks like the staircase attends when actually it's a front floor. But there's a shared study activity storage area in the roof, uh, of that, and then just a four-point-five metre square bottom.
How weird.
I think it's a bit weird, but I don't think we can object to it.
No. I suppose those choice, activity study areas could be bedrooms, couldn't they?
Yes, they could, but is it a totally separate flat? No.
I think on planning terms, Chair, if I may, that, um, I, I can't see a problem with what they wanna do to the roof. Um, and, and as, they will be subject to, uh, building regulations, which it may not comply with, and if it doesn't comply, they won't get it, get it, they could.
And the fire regs.
Building regulations, so, um, I think, again, I would propose no, no objection.
No objection, I'll second that, yeah, all those in favour? Right, yeah, a lot of these rooms.
Open road, um, so it's, it's, it's existing, um, so they're going up, so this is the bit, you know, if you need to focus on. And then going up a bit, and it's quite rightly, there's a bed just stuck in the corridor. But that bedroom is also six point eight metres square.
It's only indicative, so this, maybe it's just indicative.
What do you mean indicative?
Well, it's just, it's just showing, it's showing, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be a bed there, like just drawing a bed there, it just is.
Well, yeah, you, you, you think they'd call it something else, like a gym or something.
Oh, they would have done, it would have saved us time.
That'll mean they have labeled that as a bedroom.
Yes.
Okay, very enough.
Um, and it, it's sort of separate from the rest of the house as well.
Would that be a granny flat?
Hmm?
Granny flat, granny bit, we don't know, do we?
Hmm.
Again, it's.
I bet it's, it's irrelevant.
It's irrelevant to the planning application.
Is it, is it okay, is it, as an extension?
I think it's a granny. I think there was a thing, um, a number of years ago of actually having bedrooms off of bedrooms, so you had to walk through a bedroom to get to a bedroom or a bathroom.
I was brought up.
And I, I, I've lived in those, um, and, yeah, shared.
That is not a bedroom, that is a bedroom in a corridor.
Private dwelling.
Oh, yeah, it was a private dwelling, yeah.
This is a private dwelling, so you have to look at it in a sense, Chair, as a, as a private dwelling, that, that. Should they, should they put anybody else in there, and that, then that would be subject to any enforcement action. So, um, you've got, got to deal with what you've got in front of you and not what it might be.
Well, the study is definitely gonna come on second bedroom, innit? The study is definitely gonna be a bedroom.
Well, that's fair enough, you can, you know, if I, if I don't want a bathroom or a kitchen in my house, I can take them out, even though I can say I don't. I'll make them all bedroom.
And the only access is up from the outside or through the utility room.
If that was for a granny or an older person that needed.
Well, that, that would be elder abuse. Putting you on granny, you know, front door.
On one floor, you know, tripped us at the outside, et cetera, et cetera, and everybody can go to help them, we don't know why this planning application was put in. I mean, basically, as a, as an extension, does it fulfil a, a breach of this, they're coming, they do inside.
Yeah, concrete, separate building, no, I, I think as far as, as far as that is concerned, Chair, there's, there doesn't appear to be any effects on the neighbours. That, that is sig- significant, there's no effect on the street scene that is significant at all, so as far as I can see, Chair, I mean, I propose no objection.
Objection, okay, second, all those in favour? I'm gonna put everybody off coming to planning meetings. There's quite a lot of not putting up the right signs with a lot of applications.
Uh, Chair, if I may, through, through, just, um, the lady in question has been in touch with us as the ward councillors. It is an area I'm very, very familiar with, um, it was a, I'd have to say. Well, perhaps poorly used is, is the wrong term, it, it was a, a residential home which was not opposite the entrance to the school. Traffic and parking is already a. Gemma Goldsmith, um, I know she won't mind me using her name because her letters are, are a matter of public knowledge. Uh, Mrs. Goldsmith, I have explained to her that parking is not a planning issue, it would become an enforcement issue. But my personal view on this location, to go from half a dozen elderly people. With two vehicles that belong to the support staff, to an HMO of this nature in its location is just. So I, I would support her application and stop it, with regard to the lack of communication, I have now spoken with residents, there was no communication. And I did go, there weren't any, they whizzed around and put them up with the appropriate dates on. So I understand the local people have a real concern. On a strictly planning thing, I think it's gonna be somebody wiser than me who makes the decision.
Yes, right.
Thank you, Chair, um, I, I just have to take a little bit of issue with what councillor Piper's just, just said, um. I know the Noolin very, very well, my mother-in-law was in there for two years before she part- she passed away. Um, it was always full in the, uh, in the few years that, that we visited. Um, quite a number of residents were there, um, it was a well-run home, um, the mother-in-law was well cared for, et cetera. However, um, the amount of cars that would be there when people visited, because we was there, was always along that road. And you're always trying to find somewhere to park, so, you know, I, I, I don't think that that is an issue, I don't think the parking is an issue. Because there was enough people visiting there, especially at the weekends, um, you know, so there was a nu- a number of cars there. It's whether or not this property is suitable for a multiple occupation, um, it, it don't know that. Um, then it's likely to, and everything else.
The rooms look actually very generous.
Yeah, they are.
This is some, yeah, councillor Green.
I think we should object to the change of use on the grounds that we need residential care.
Right, um, councillor Cretton.
Uh, I mean, I have a problem with that, because if no one wants to run it, no one wants to run it. So you'll just leave it empty, and, and in that sense, it's already closed as a residential care home. Because, uh, I don't, for whatever reasons, uh, I completely agree, we desperately, we desperately need a residential care, but, um. I, I was trying to work out how many, um, rooms there are, I can see number eleven there, um. If it's no longer, no one wants to run it as a residential care home, and, uh, we also need accommodation, I, I don't object to it, I.
They've closed it so they can do this.
Well, not absolutely, sorry, councillor Piper.
Uh, thank you, Chair, uh, I just wanna obviously reiterate what councillor Piper was saying about the parking, and I know. That we can't object because of the parking, but for it to be an HMO, the residents in that area. Uh, kept phoning us because school is there, and the pickup and the dropping off. Is a, is a major issue for the residents there now, and if that is turned into an HMO. The, um, the traffic around those few, uh, roads is going to be a nightmare. And that's, you know, that's not fair on the residents who live there.
Why nobody walks to school anymore?
Well, they, they don't, the, the part I ask, um, I've had phone calls from elderly people. Who are trapped in their homes from, say, three till four o'clock because of the, uh, because of the picking up time and after-school clubs and so on, it. It's not a very pleasant for some of the residents there, and they are elderly, because most of the houses in that area, they're bungalows.
I saw all the letters of objection, I went, I read them all, yes.
Can I just answer councillor Green there, the, the home was closed down by the Secu-C, uh, Care Quality Commission. Um, because it wasn't being run properly, uh, the person who run it, it was a family-run, run business. And they couldn't get staff, and I think that was the effect on the residents, and that is why it closed down. Um, it's been closed for a while now.
Councillor Cretton.
I think we're assuming that eleven rooms means eleven cars, and, and I'm just thinking that. HMOs that I know of actually don't tend to have that higher number of car owners within those units. So I'm not quite sure that the, the number of cars increased will actually be that great. Um, compared to the number of units there, and I don't know if anyone else has any other information or evidence from other HMOs. Um, certainly the ones I know of haven't seen an awful lot of car users.
Councillor Piper.
Yeah, thank you to, to both of you, I have spent some time talking with Mrs. Goldsmith and saying that the parking is not actually a planning issue. There, my final comment on this would be that, uh. As, as I understand it, the, what is now being called proposed attic is an empty space. And if you turn that into living accommodation, you've now got a building which is three stories. If it's three stories, it needs a fire door on every single door, if it's an HMO, every single door needs to be lockable, inside and out, and you cannot lock fire doors. So again, building control and building regulations will pick up.
Yeah.
Any or all of the issues about turning this into an HMO, because you simply cannot, as far as I'm aware, lock fire doors.
I think, is there a fire escape, uh, up the back?
Doesn't matter, the fire brigade now, they've been to our house, we had to do it in our own home, um.
If you swallowed that.
Fire brigade now, they're focused now on a building that goes above two, two levels, like ours is.
Three stories, yeah.
Ours is three, you must protect the central staircase, all staircases, you must protect them, fire doors absolutely everywhere. Because they don't like taking people out of buildings now, they prefer to deal with the fire and take them down the staircase. And I think they would come up with any hiccups with that.
That is, as you said on the last one, that is building control.
Yeah, it's a.
I mean, having looked at it, those rooms are very generous, they've got, most of them have got a non-suite, not all of them. They've got generous communal areas, um.
I'll make a proposal, Chair, I propose we make no objection, Chair.
Yeah, I would second that, but I think we, we were right to take the residents' concerns and.
Mrs. Goldfinch, sorry, Chair, Mrs. Goldfinch is, has applied to speak at TDC Planning. I'm not going to speak for her because only one person can speak, she wants to do it herself.
Have you called it in?
She has written to Charles and asked for permission to speak on it.
But it would, um, sorry, Chair, it would only be, it would only come to members if it's called in.
I'll do that today, it only appeared on Monday's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Planning list, but my assumption was because she wishes to speak on it.
Yeah.
And as, as a member of the public, she's allowed to do that at T D C, but not here, that it would automatically therefore be called in.
No.
That's not fair. Thank you.
It can be called in by.
Thank you, Chair, for that, thank you.
Okay, so we've got purpose, which I will second to, um, have no objection, all those in favour? You're abstaining. Oh, I'm against it.
I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to sit this one out because it does need to move forward.
Yeah.
Um, and I will sort out the details with T D C.
So, sorry, all those in favour again? So we, that's, everybody set? The Parker family, um, and councillor Green.
The erection of first floor rear extension with Julia, our previous cons, uh, our previous comment was no objection to a similar. It's in the conservation area, T D C refused the application. Um, on, there's quite a lot of grounds that I can read them out if you wish. However, councillor Mixie. Yes, sorry, councillor Mixie.
We put no objection in before, when there were other things, T D C decided they didn't like it for whatever reason. It's scaled back so much, it's, it's, it's ridiculous. I, I propose we say no objection again.
Well, can we just see?
Yeah.
Um, the, the, um, the new section.
She's taken up the roof as a.